Please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. In compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act notices that this duly and regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
May I have a roll call, please?
For Monday, December 20th, 2021, the Jackson Township Planning Board meeting. Mr. Dolan?
Pleasure.
Dr. Campbell? Mr. Riker is absent.
Here.
Mr. Herman? Ms. Britto is absent. Mr. Wall?
Here.
Mr. Fleming? Is absent. Mr. Ricardi?
Here.
Mr. Herring?
Here.
Mr. Hudak?
Here. Thank you. Excuse me. May I have a motion for payment of voucher recording secretary for this evening, December 20th, 2021, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Minutes from November 15th. Has everyone had a chance to review them? Are there any questions? Problems? No?
I'd love to accept the minutes.
Thank you. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Engineering and planning matters. Gentlemen, do you have anything this evening? Thank you. And legal matters. We have a host of resolutions for this evening.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add one to the agenda, which I apologize to our secretary. Oh, I take that back. You put it on last instead of first, the resolution of the meeting. So they're ahead of me, as usual.
Yes. Okay, the first one being block 22301, lots 5, 6.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll, I'll call it out.
Okay, that's fine.
Some of them are here because of minutes and other things. So resolution, I have to go a little out of order the way they're numbered. Resolution 202126, which is the resolution dates and times for 2022. That's resolution number 202126.
Okay, so we have a resolution for the meeting dates and times for 2022, and everyone I'm sure has had a chance to review them. Is there any comments or questions regarding these meetings? No? Okay, can I get a motion? To accept? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next matter is Resolution 202127, granting a one-year time extension to Casey Hunter, block 2501, lot 27.
Okay, may I have a motion for approval, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And roll call, please.
I'm sorry, I actually don't have Dr. Campbell eligible for that one.
Oh, okay.
Second.
So we have a first and we have a second. And roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming? Oh, sorry. Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay, that resolution passes, thank you.
The next resolution, Your Honor, that's where I was today, Mr. Chairman, is 2028, Resolution granting a one-year time extension pursuant to the Resolution to Maplewood Estates, block 17201, lots 36.01 through 36.13.
Okay, one-year time extension. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes, I did not see Mr. Wall as being on this list of being eligible. If I'm not eligible, you could strike my vote then, if I'm not eligible. Thank you, thank you. Okay, how many was that?
Four.
Okay. That passes, thank you.
Resolution 202129, Resolution regarding, again, a time extension to Jackson Properties, Inc., block 2101, lot 5.01. That extension is through May 25, May 15, 2022.
Actually, that's lots 5.02 and 5.03.
Yes, I will make that correction on the face and I'll get that to you.
Thank you.
On the face of the resolution.
May I have a motion, please? Again, that's block 2101, lots 5.02 and 5.03, Jackson Properties, for a time extension.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
And last one, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Resolution 202130, granting a time extension for the previously granted preliminary site plan to J210S LLC and J21SSW LLC, block 4101, lots 18 and 19.
Jackson Woods.
Jackson Woods, yes.
Yes. Second, and roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, that should be...
That's what we have for resolutions.
That's it for your resolutions. Okay. Any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, because this will carry into the next step of what the board needs to do tonight, which is place a number of items on the agenda for 2022, and there were two matters asked to be carried for this evening. The first matter asked to be carried is block 2603, lot 13, West Commodore Business Park. That matter is asked to be carried without the requirement of notice. That's for a time extension as well. So notice is not technically necessary, as well as block 4101, lot 20.02, Jackson Woods Southeast for the clubhouse. They've also asked that matter, for that matter, to be carried.
Did they give you any dates for...
They understood that the board would be discussing dates in general, so they are also thrown to the mercy of the board.
Okay.
The only folks, and I would defer mostly to Mr. Cle, I apologize to put him directly on the spot. The only group that asked specifically for a date are the Lee's Village, which was February 7th, I believe.
Lee's Village, I don't see Lee's Village.
Oh, Lee's Village application to be carried. They requested what date? February 7th, and it seemed to work. So...
Okay, so we have no other meetings that evening yet. So can I get a motion to carry block 11901, lot 40, Lee's Village LLC, to our February 7th, 2022? Boy, I'll tell you, the years. Okay. Second, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes, thank you. Okay, Mr. Gertner, do you have any other...
I'm going through the chair. I'm going to defer really to Mr. Cle for some recommendations based on balancing the scheduling, though, again, like a lawyer, I can't help myself. So I would think that the time extension for West Commodore Business Park that just got carried from tonight could be carried, if the board doesn't mind, to the reorg meeting even. Because that shouldn't take.
And that is our meeting of January 10th. Yeah, that'll be, that'll be quick. Okay, so we have block 2603, lot 13, West Commodore Business Park. We're going to carry that over to our January 10th reorg meeting. We have a motion for that, please. We have a motion for that, please.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
The last one I'll have a specific recommendation about is Block 2701, Lot 2, the Denton Holdings matter. I would appreciate that being heard sometime in January. It's important for the Board, Planning Board, to know that that specific lot and block is currently subject to litigation from a zoning board denial. So it would be important for the municipality to have that matter heard.
Okay, so we have our January 24th meeting. May I have a motion to move or carry Block 20701, Lot 2, Denton Holdings, to our January 24th, 2022 meeting, please?
So move.
Second.
Second, roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Gertner, any others?
So just to put it out, so to focus the board, so it appears that the North County Line Road LLC matter, 146, has already had some testimony given, so in theory, they're not starting from the beginning, as well as the 28 North Cooks Bridge. So, again, depending on... I know the zoning board traditionally has heard matters on the reorg meeting. I know the Planning Board generally has not, but that's an issue, that's a question for this board, obviously.
Well, personally, I don't want to see, we already have a time extension for the reorg. We have business to take care of in the reorg. I really don't want two applications that evening. I'd like to keep it to one.
That's...
Okay. You know, these late nights...
Okay, that's... So then, in terms of age, I respectfully, I guess, to put the 53, Block 5301, Lot 12, on the January 24th meeting, just so you'll have two applications that evening.
Mm-hmm. Okay, can I get a motion for Block 5301, Lots 12, 146 North County Line Road LLC, to our January 24th, 2022 meeting, please? Need a motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Now, I don't see Mr. Bernstein on here as being eligible. Is that just rescheduling? Okay, fine.
Yes. I mean, the new members, whomever they be, need to ensure that they listen prior to hear, for rescheduled purposes. And, Mr. Chairman, again, in, this is the board's determination about whether or not you want to just dedicate that February 7th meeting totally to the school, or if you, in front of it, want to put an application that has had at least some testimony, and that would be the, excuse me, the 28 North Cooks Bridge.
Mr. Chairman, before you even make that decision, I can't do the 7th of February, so on that application, so the 28th of February is the next meeting would work for us.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, if I may again, so I'm just looking, perhaps also then on the February 7th meeting, there are two other, the BMH Property 1 and the Rutherford Estates are two time extensions. So if I could make a respectful recommendation, subject obviously to everyone's comments, perhaps put those two on, the two time extensions on right before the school, and then have the school on February 7th, and that will move three applications that day.
So we would have two time extensions. Do you see any extenuating circumstances with these time extensions? My question is, because I want to give adequate time for the school, I have a feeling that, you know, there's a lot of testimony that's going to be given, so I want to give them ample time.
These are, this, one of these might be a little bit different in that the municipal land is, well, I'm showing correctly if I'm wrong, provides for protection. You have, you know, for a final, you have two years, and you're able to, and then three extensions. One of these applications is out of extensions. The zoning hasn't changed, so there might be some dialogue and discussions about...
I'd forgotten, you had talked to me about that briefly. Which one is that one?
I believe that's the West Commodore, the Block 2603, Lot 13.
It's not on here yet.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. There will be some with that.
Okay, that's fine, then. So these, but these two shouldn't have been...
Correct.
So...
Comfortable with that?
I would...
Everybody comfortable with that? Yeah? Okay. All right.
So that would mean that Block 19701, Lots 12, 1301, 2, 3, 4, and 5, BMH Property 1, and Block 11701, Lots 9, 25, 26, and 33, would be moved to...
February 7.
The February 7. Now, Mr., geez, Mr. Alfieri, can you send somebody for a time extension, just in case? I just saw that, too.
If we have to, yes, but I might ask, I think Donna Jennings is coming for the school. I might ask her to cover it.
That's fine. So, I'm trying to balance this stuff. So the only one to go on the other February 7th meeting would be Block 19701, Lots 12, 1301 through 1305, which is fine then, because it would be that and the school.
That and the school, just one in the school. That's fine. May I have a motion to carry Block 19701, Lots 12, 13.01, 2, 3, 4, 5, BMH Properties 1 LLC, to our February 7th, 2022 meeting?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, and then for the February 28th meeting would be 28 with Cook Bridge and Rutherford Estates time.
We're going to revise plans for 28 North Cooks Bridge? They left plans a while, five months ago, we haven't seen plans since...
I spoke to the engineer tonight, and he says he'll have plans done at least 30 days before whenever it's scheduled, so that's all I can say.
Okay.
At some point, you can't keep flogging up the agenda.
So with that...
At that point, you either submit revised plans or withdraw the application.
That could, so let that be the drop dead date, February 28th. If we don't have them in, then dismiss without prejudice and we'll start over.
You got it. So, and also, Mr. Chairman, may I make another recommendation, listening to Mr. Peters and Mr. Alfieri, that on that February 28th day, you also carry that Jackson Woods clubhouse to that meeting.
Mr. Chairman, just so we're clearing the date on the 28 North Cooks Bridge, the drop dead date is a month before the meeting.
Yes. Yes. One month before February 28th, 30 days, whatever that may be. Mark it on your calendar, make sure you have everything. If not...
Let us know.
Okay.
Okay. So... That brings us...
Well, we have, you have to vote on those.
Okay.
So it's, Mr. Chairman, it's the 28 North Cooks Bridge, the Rutherford Estates, and the Jackson Woods Southeast Clubhouse for February 28th.
So we do them all in one motion? Okay. All right, can I have a motion to move or carry Block 601, Lots 10.02 and 42, Matitac National Golf Course?
No.
Oh, no? That wasn't...
You're reading from the, another, a different list. We're talking about the carrying list.
The carrying list, so North Cook Bridge?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Block 8601, Lot 41 through 28, North Cooks Bridge Road LLC, going to carry that to February 28th. And along with Block 19701, Lots 12, 13.1, 2, 3, 4, 5...
No, Rutherford Estates.
Rutherford Estates.
Rutherford Estates, where am I seeing Rutherford Estates? It's right here, this is... Oh, that already got carried. So there is my, you know what, that's not on your agenda.
It's not on my agenda. All right, so I'll announce it, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
That's all right. So the three for February 28th, I apologize, probably cleaner to start again. Block 8601, Lot 41-28, North Cooks Bridge Road LLC, Block 11701, Lots 9, 25, 26, and 33, Rutherford Estates, and Block 4101, Lot 20.02, Jackson Woods Southeast Clubhouse, through the chairman asking for a motion to carry to the February 28, 2022 meeting without the requirement of further notice by the applicant.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
And just...
You did that very well, thank you.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Chair, and then again through the chair, and with respect, and Mr. Alfieri, this is perfect for you, because if one of your applications isn't heard, Blocks 7309, Lots 12 and 13, Jackson Project LLC, would be carried to the March 7, 2022 meeting without the requirement of further notice. We can't do that one either.
No, Jackson, Jackson Projects, tonight, we're going...
Oh, that's on, oh, I was all smart, and you caught me. So then we've covered everything that had to be carried. Okay, I apologize. Sorry, I want to see if your clients were paying attention. All right, so we're done with the agenda.
Yeah, so I guess my agenda is earlier than this one. Okay, it is what it is. Thank you. Okay, now that we went through that, that was a lot of stuff in a half hour. Okay, Board Matters for discussion, you all got in your packets an amended housing element and fair share plan dated back from 2017, and a new ordinance, so anybody have any, anything they want to bring up on that?
Mr. Chairman, you may want to first hear from municipal representative to discuss...
And you are, sir?
Peter Vandenkoye, here on behalf of CME Associates.
Okay.
Mr. Vandenkoye, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you give us your full name, spell your last, your affiliation, and then through the chairman, since you're a municipal employee for these purposes, I don't think too much of your expertise needs to be on the record, but discuss, as the chairman asks, the purpose of this amendment.
Sure, it's Peter Vandenkoye, V-A-N-D-E-N-K-O-O-Y, and I'm here tonight on behalf of CME Associates, as an independent contractor, actually. We essentially, I just, I could provide a quick overview, if you like, and feel free to jump in with any questions, or be happy to answer questions after. So essentially, the, as was mentioned, there's a 2017 housing plan element, fair share plan that's been adopted. Subsequent to that, there were a number of different reports put out by the court master, and the judgment of compliance to repose was ultimately obtained by the township. One of the, the conditions of the judgment of compliance and repose was to comply with the court master's report, and one of the reports is from July 31, 2017. In that report, conditions 4 and 8 have a requirement where there's just some very simple ministerial or like housekeeping related issues, basically changing the, correcting the number of units on a couple of different projects that had changed or had otherwise been modified during that court process at that time. So there's no new units proposed, no projects are changing, it's just really corrective action to the 2017 housing plan element and fair share plan. And the projects that are affected are just adding CARE 1 Assisted Living, had not previously been put into the housing plan element and fair share plan, it's now been introduced into Table 8, as per the court's direction. Sunrise Assisted Living Facility was reflected as two units in the 2017 plan, it's now been updated to 10 units, which is the existing number of units in that facility. There was 10 units additional created in that prior round because of the addition of the CARE 1 two-unit project from CARE 1, and the eight additional units from Sunrise Assisted Living, so some units were carried over from the prior round table to the third round table. And as a result of that, one of the mechanisms in the affordable housing jargon in the third round plan was a build-out analysis for the RG2 and RG3 zone. It was set at 290 units, those 10 units that were added to the plan enabled that to be reduced to 280 units. So just really a mathematical exercise in that case, and those are really all the, all the updates, just to address conditions 4 and 8 in accordance with the court's requirements.
And in your professional opinion, do you think that we're on the right course here with this housing plan?
I think so, yeah. I mean, this, no, these are, these amendments are going to maintain the judgments, judgment of compliance, the townships, rather, judgment of compliance and repose, and the builder's remedy protection, the plan's being implemented, township's got a robust and active affordable housing administration program and rehabilitation program, which are also part of the court order. And, yeah, I mean, from what I can see, you know, it's certainly a complex plan, but things are in pretty good shape from an implementation standpoint. So I think this will, this will help maintain compliance and go a long way toward maintaining the protections.
Mr. Clea, you care to comment on...
Then do agree.
You do agree.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Peters?
No comment, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wall?
Mr. Chairman, the Planning Board, this is a part of ensuring that we're in compliance with the rules. Peter and his team, working with Jeff Serenian and his team, are here to help us, help us make sure, by the mayor administrative side and council side, and also the planning board side, and any related sides and professionals, both on either side of the table, are working with the same set of facts. I'm the municipal housing liaison, we have administrative agent assistants, and we work with our team of professionals to make sure everyone's working off the same playbook, and whether it's a special master, or court, or plaintiff's attorneys, defense attorneys, whoever the case may be, we want to make sure that we're up to speed as far as the rules and regulations, and this is to that end, making sure that we're compliant.
So you're, you're in agreement that...
Yes.
Okay.
I asked them to involve this process to help the boards with the respective obligations under the Affordable Housing Elements and Fair Share Plans.
Okay, is this the end of it?
There is no end.
There is no end.
There are only new beginnings.
Okay.
So it's a process, it's an iterative process, it's formerly known as COA, wherever, whatever acronym or derivative you want to utilize, and many different sides of the, you know, the issue. So we try to work collaboratively with the folks who have the right to buy, excel, and develop within the law, and the obligations, and also our ability and our right to provide for the health and safety of the community through the application process, which is also why, moving forward in 2022, the Planning Board should also avail themselves of specialized services in this regard, whenever an application comes in with an affordable housing component. It helps the developer, and it helps the taxpayers, all the different users, the Planning It, it helps the developer and it helps the taxpayers, all the different users, the planning board to have that. We have discussed this previously, but you need that expertise available for the professionals from Mr. Gertner and the folks that are involved.
Anybody?
No, no questions. So I guess we're gonna, we need a motion to, not approve, but Well, is, Mr. Chairman, if I may, it is a motion to approve because that resolution then gets carried over to the council as part of the process of approving the overall plan. And in fact, as part of your package, you were a, a resolution memorializing approval, should you approve it, has been prepared for our board secretary. Our board sec, wait, I can't. Yes, you, you do. Okay. All right, so at this point then, I'd like to open it up for public comment. If anyone cares to speak about this amended housing element and fair share plan, please step up to the microphone. Where's Marty? I need him. All right, seeing no one?
Motion for the public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So I need a motion to approve the amended housing element and fair share plan of twenty seventeen. I guess now we're going to call this of two thousand twenty-two.
Twenty, yeah, actu- actually, December twenty twenty-one.
Okay, that's fine. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're on our walls. Okay, our first application this evening.
Lot, we have an ordinance, don't we?
Sorry?
We have an ordinance from the governing body.
Oh, okay. All right, another board matter for discussion, ordinance number thirty-two dash twenty-one, and ordinance amending chapter twenty-four two forty-four dash fifty-seven point one entitled Municipal HC Mixed Use Neighborhood Center Highway Commercial Zone to permit an additional permitted principal use. You all should have received a copy of this ordinance thirty-two dash twenty-one. Part of your packet. Mr. Gertner, you want to give a quick synopsis of this?
Mr. Chairman, I might take that step of that.
Okay.
Mixed use neighborhood commercial center highway commercial zone is the area basically by glories. It's bounded by Tommater Boulevard and five twenty-six, Cedar Swamp Road and five twenty-seven. That zoning's been in place for probably better part of fifteen or twenty years. The governing body is adding an additional permitted use distribution center fulfillment center warehouse inclusive of assembly finishing and finishing of materials or products. The list of permitted uses, which generally includes the things that are in the neighborhood commercial zone. Based upon the land development patterns we've seen up on one ninety-five and five thirty-seven where this is a permitted use addition that we're making, it was sought by the governing body to include this in the area of what's basically off exit twenty-one, the Jackson twenty-one area near glories. Purpose simply is that they haven't brought in tenants based upon the existing uses that are permitted. And so upon further review of what was permitted in the zone, it was determined that this addition may help bring those properties to fruition. So from our perspective, we take no exception to the ordinance and would recommend that the board find it not inconsistent with the master plan and the land use ordinance in the municipality.
Okay. Mr. Gertner, do you? I, I would, I would concur. I know this has gone through the planning process internally through, through first reading by the governing body. Okay. Anyone care to comment? Good question. You general, you generally have opened meetings to the public for comment on the new ordinances. Okay, you all heard that new ordinance that is being proposed. If anyone would care to comment on that, please step, step up to the microphone.
Move the closing rubber.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So unless anyone has any questions or comments regarding this, certainly entertain a motion. Anyone?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And find it, that it's consistent.
It's a recommendation back to the governing body that we find the ordinance not inconsistent with the land use sort of, with the master plan land use ordinance in the municipality.
Thank you. So we have a motion and we have a second. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Now, do we have everyone for Wright Debo Road this evening? Okay. All right, so next up, our, our application, first application is block four oh one lot nine, Wright Debo Road LLC. Mr. Cle, bring us up to
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application we first heard on November first. It involves a seven hundred thousand square foot complex involving nineteen thousand square feet of office and six eighty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-one thousand square feet of a warehouse. We finished up testimony for Mr. McFarland and we got to a point of Mr. Kennel and traffic and the offsite impacts and intersection improvements that are going to be proposed.
Okay. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a report dated September twentieth in this year. Projects located in the LM Light Industrial Office Manufacturing Zone, which permits this use as a permitted use. The zone has not changed, and I concur, Mr. Cle, I think we're about midpoint of Mr. Kennel's testimony.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Salvatore Alfieri on behalf of the applicant. First, welcome to new board members. Do you, are they qualified to vote? Did they listen to the tapes? Okay, great, thank you. Just to refresh the board's recollection, since it's been some time since we were here last. This, as indicated by your professionalism, it's permitted use in the zone. There are certain performance standards that the applicant would have to meet in order to comply with your ordinance, and we've agreed to do that. That is no retail sales, all items will be stored within completely enclosed buildings, and no warehousing or storage of hazardous chemicals are permitted. We will comply with all of those. In addition, during the course of the testimony, we had agreed that, and again, to refresh the board's recollection, there is an appeal pending on an approval for A and A truck parts application before the zoning board. If the use variance was approved by the zoning board and the objector appealed it, the court affirmed the approval by the zoning board, and now that's at the appellate division. The applicant has agreed that if this were approved as a conforming use and, and we get all the other outside agency approvals, we would abandon that use variance approval so that litigation would go away and the use variance would go away. We also agreed that there were two parking spaces that are encroaching within a setback. We agreed to eliminate those. Mr. Peters pointed out that they might be a variance. We agreed to eliminate those, and we, we have more than adequate parking. We also agreed that we would comply with all the fencing requirements of the ordinance because there was a reference to a rolling gate on the plans, but we agreed that whatever the ordinance allows, we would do. We would confer Title thirty-nine jurisdiction to the township. And then the, and we did finish all the engineering testimony from Mr. McFarland. We agreed to address all the technical comments contained within your board professional reports. Mr. Kennel did provide the traffic testimony, and then we did get hung up on the, the intersection and the adequacy of the intersection. Marked as exhibit A five in the last meeting. We marked the two resolutions for the zoning board approval that was granted. And I want to point out that on the resolution that was adopted on August seventh of two thousand nineteen, there is a condition number sixteen on page ten, which said that the applicant will address the, with Ocean County officials, along with the board engineer, related to improvements required upon all county roads and particularly the intersection of Wright Debo and West Commodore, and will pay its fair share contribution toward any recommended improvements. The applicant would stipulate that same condition can apply to this planning board application. Even though we would argue that it's, it's an offsite improvement, then the planning board really can't impose it. We're not here to argue that. We're willing to, to make that intersection improvement. In fact, since the last meeting, my client has negotiated a contract to acquire the land necessary to make the road improvement. And Mr. Kennel has had preliminary meetings with Ocean County. We don't have a final plan yet because it's too soon to do a full design, but that, that condition, I believe, would protect the board going forward so that when it is finally designed in consultation with the county planning board and your engineer, we would be able to come up with an adequate intersection. That's the introduction. So we have no other testimony other than Mr. Kennel could come up and just give you a brief explanation as to what preliminarily has been done. And then we'll answer any questions the board has or the public has. And Mr. Kennel was sworn in and qualified at the last meeting.
So we generally reaffirm, but not go through the credentials. Mr. Kennel, thank you for raising your right hand. Again, you solemnly swear or affirm testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board this evening will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. Scott Kennel with McDonough and Ray Associates.
And you've been previously sworn in, your credentials accepted with regard to this application.
Yes, they have.
Okay, and Mr. Kennel, you, you heard the summary I made just a moment ago as it relates to the intersection and the potential for an improvement to the intersection. Could you describe for the board what has happened since the last meeting and what would happen going forward if this were approved?
Well, again, I've had discussions with the Ocean County engineer, John Ernst, and as well as the assistant engineer, Mark Jenke, about the realignment of Wright Debo Road so that when it intersects, West Commodore would be at a ninety-degree angle. It would also, as a result, based on some discussions we've had, would locate that intersection, the realigned intersection approximately two hundred and fifty feet west of Burke Road. So therefore, we would create a more traditional intersection design because right now you have Wright Debo that comes down at a skewed angle. It's slightly offset from Burke Road, and there are some awkward turning movements at that location. So the intent here is to create two offset Ts that are separated approximately by two hundred and fifty feet that could accommodate the geometry, the geometry would be designed to accommodate the large wheelbase vehicles as proposed for Wright Debo Road.
Can you graphically demonstrate that?
The We have an aerial?
We, an aerial was exhibit A one. Do you have a pointer?
No, it's, it's off the map because we're down here. Oh. Close, but
To the left?
Well, it's, it's going to be right down in this area here. Off, off the aerial. Basically, the intent is, and again, I know we don't have five twenty-eight showing on here, but as we get to approach five twenty-eight, approximately a hundred feet north of key map on the cover sheet.
That was A two, the site plan, maybe the first sheet of A two? Anthony, do you have the full set of plans in your file? That, that A two was just the exhibit that was introduced, but we did submit a full set.
Mr. Alfieri, Mr. Kennel, if you'd come up. The chairman just asked me a question, and while you're looking for that, this may be of some assistance. Very often, this board with this application just now and others talks about what I'll term the balance between these offsite improvements and the county process to demand from applicants their fair share for certain improvements. Now, can you explain in detail from your traffic expertise position what that means?
Well, and before he does that, just to be clear, the applicant will do the work. He's not looking to do a fair share contribution. He's going to do the entire road improvement, intersection improvement.
So, so let's say it this way then, and is that, and then Mr. Peters will help me out. And is that because, based on the representation, that he in fact is going to purchase the property required to make the improvement?
That's correct.
That's correct.
So arguably, it then becomes related to the development because he's going to, the developer is going to control it in any event, correct?
That's correct.
Doesn't it therefore remove the objection that it's an offsite improvement?
Oh, yeah, we've, we've agreed that we would stipulate that. We're not raising that objection.
In case anyone else raises it.
Understood.
Make certain that, in fact, it's now because a developer is in fact acquiring it, it is part and parcel of this particular request, is it not?
Correct. He's streamlining the process rather than by condemnation. Taking the, all by the horns, for lack of a better term, and trying, and facilitating the required land necessary to realign Wright Debo Road. And as your, your comment earlier, as far as the county, the Ocean County traffic impact fee, that would be credited against whatever funds and monies he needs to put forward to advance the intersection improvements.
Right, so the benefit here is that typically you could only require a fair share contribution. This applicant has agreed to fund one hundred percent of that significant road realignment and, and road improvement project.
Mr. Peters?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I'm, I'm sort of out of order of what the questioning we asked, but I'll, I'll just go through one of the comments I had. In Mr. Kennel's June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one report on page six, and I apologize, but I'd like to read the paragraph that discusses the intersection of five twenty-six and Wright Debo Road. It reads it, although projected levels of service for this intersection all fall within acceptable parameters, an improvement will be required to the southbound Wright Debo Road approach in order to properly process truck traffic entering and exiting Wright Debo Road from County Route five twenty-six. Specifically, property on the northwest corner of Wright Debo Road and five twenty-six will need to be acquired in order to bring the Wright Debo Road approach into County Route five twenty-six at a ninety-degree T-intersection. Proper radii will need to be established on the northeast and northwest corners of the realigned intersection in order to ensure that designed vehicles or large trucks will be able to navigate the, the intersection safely and efficiently. We note that the foregoing improvements will be subject to the approval of the Ocean County Engineering Department. So Mr. Alfieri sort of took the steam out of my, my question in that they said they're going to do it. My comment is, is if you need to do this for safety, A, doesn't the town need to see it before we give preliminary final? And B, don't we need to get some form of agreement that says you can't start putting vehicles there until the improvements are built? Right, right in the county, a check doesn't, right, doesn't work here. I think that was the point that Mr. Gertner started to make was we can't take an intersection like this and say sixty percent of the truck traffic's heading that way, and you just write a check. There's got to be a physical improvement associated with this approval. Quite frankly, while they've indicated, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Alfieri, that they will become responsible for this, and it'll be done with the review of the county. It's got to be done as part of this application. It's got to be installed before you bring a truck down to that intersection.
And, and Mr. Alfieri, we need, this board needs to see this improvement, see how it's being done, and our professionals need to review this and advise us and sign off on it. And I'm sure we have residents And I'm sure we have residents that are concerned about this as well, that they would like to speak about it. And right now, they they can't because they can't visualize what's gonna happen.
Well, I guess a couple of points. I agree with 90% of what Mr. Peters said. The what I don't agree with is we should at least get preliminary approval. The problem is, is if we don't get any approval from this board, we're gonna spend a fortune to design a road, work with the county, and then come back. And if we don't get approved, we wasted all that effort. If you gave us preliminary conditions upon us coming back with that intersection, at least it assures us some rights that we can then develop the property. And it's common that that type of relief be granted. In terms of finishing the improvements before we get a CO, I think that's a reasonable condition so that no trucks will enter the intersection until the work's done. Other than that, that's the 10% is just getting preliminary. 90%, Mr. Peters, is correct.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I take no exception to the approval of the applicants. Okay, yeah, I'll buy that as well. Anyone else care to comment?
That's all we have. We just, I don't think we opened it to the public at any time, so we definitely need to do it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I apologize. I thought we were talking about just the issue of the intersection. I do unfortunately have some more questions for Mr. Kennel.
Great.
Go ahead, Scott.
Scott, you had done intersection analysis down to here, 526 and Wright Debo Road.
That's correct.
From that location, could you, I don't remember you testifying for the board. So I've read your report a number of times. Could you explain what happens with truck distribution when they get to this intersection? We just spent some time on?
Yes. And again, as we have previously testified, all truck traffic would be oriented to Wright Debo Road. There would be no trucks permitted to go west on Wright Debo Road out to Route 537, whereas the majority of of that roadway is residential in nature. And being respective of that character, that roadway, this site's been designed to process all trucks down to Wright Debo Road. And we had provided, in our report, assumptions as far as how traffic would be assigned to the 526. We're expecting that approximately 75% of the traffic would be oriented to and from the Glories Corner intersection to get access 195, while the bounds, 25%, would be oriented to the west to work their way out towards 537 to access 195. Because it's expected that a significant portion of the truck traffic associated with this development would be oriented to 195.
So as a, as an engineer, a bit of a nerd, what happens when 75% of this, of the truck traffic to this intersection hits the Glories intersection? Are there any conditions there that need to be implemented prior to this site becoming operational?
There are no, I mean, as far as the county is concerned, there have been no conditions assessed. There was a comment based on our recent review to review that intersection. That intersection is slated for improvements as as part of the Jackson Woods application. We would be adding during the morning peak hour approximately 25 to 28 trucks during the morning peak hour and approximately 30 during the afternoon peak hour.
So again, respectfully to to the concern that our board has, that's a truck every two minutes during the peak hour. Do we ask you, or do we rely on the county to tell us whether or not a physical improvement has to be made at Glories in order for all these trucks to utilize that intersection?
Again, I'll I'll defer to Mr. Alfieri. I mean, based on my experiences, that would go through, that would go through the county review process. This is a permitted use, so then it becomes an offsite intersection. So I think, both ways considered, we're still subject to Ocean County review. And it's my understanding that we would, in all likelihood, we're gonna have to analyze that intersection as part of the Ocean County Planning Board review.
Yeah, again, no disrespect to your testimony. My concern is that what my board consistently asks of us, is there an intersection where writing a check simply isn't the answer? And so I would I would hope that at some point during this process, you get a response from the county that tells us what's gonna go on. Because it's it's not one or two trucks. We're talking 30 trucks in the peak hour, tractor trailers that are heading that way. So I don't think it's insignificant, and I think it deserves at least some response either by the applicant or the county. So...
And and we agree that writing a check doesn't always solve the problem. And that's why we're funding fully that new intersection. The other intersection where we have a much more minimal impact on the overall intersection traffic, we we're gonna rely on whatever the county requires. We can't make a road improvement to that intersection. We can only make our fair share contribution.
Mr. Kennel, I'm sorry, were you done?
I have one more. If you want. Mr. Kennel, have you at all researched the existing condition of the Wright Debo Road pavement between your project and 526?
I have not.
My concern is without a report from perhaps township engineer of, is the existing Wright Debo Municipal Street, correct?
Yes.
So my concern is you're gonna take tractor-trailer traffic on a street that neither you nor I know whether or not it's built to that standard. So Mr. Alfieri may maybe the, maybe 90% right here and telling me that's the town's problem. 10% of me wants to say, we need to at least know whether or not we have to put the town on notice that the road's four inches thick. We're gonna be driving, I don't know what the number was, 70 vehicles an hour on.
Yeah, other than there are other industrial uses along Wright Debo Road that have truck traffic, that are generating truck traffic today. And obviously, yes, this development will add additional traffic.
Yeah, I think you guys might be the majority once this is fully operational. But I guess I, we sort of gleaned over it in the initial testimony. I just wanted to be clear that our Wright Debo is a township road, and the town has certain responsibilities when we zone properties for a particular type of use. I think as engineers, we we need to at least look at the road and say, is the road sufficient for people to be running the number of vehicles you're gonna be putting on there? Not saying it's your responsibility. I'm saying that between the applicant and the planning board, someone's gotta go tell the town that we're gonna do this so that we don't go out there and degrade the the road right at the offset. So I'd like to find a way for the board, the applicant, and the township engineer to get together and decide if there's the need. I don't want you to get out there, have the road go to heck. And then the town's in a bad spot. Right now, it's just the planning board and the applicant. Town's responsible for the road. And someone want to have a conversation with them about what's going on and verify whether or not that street is of sufficient thickness or bearing capacity to handle the number of vehicles that are coming out of this site. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
We have no, we have no issue as a condition of preliminary approval to contact the township engineer, get whatever data and information is necessary to determine the adequacy of the Wright Debo pavement. And we'll come back with final and report to the board.
Yeah, because what can be done between preliminary and final to ensure that?
Correct. Correct.
And Mr. Kennel, a couple of questions. You stated that, you know, you don't, it's not under your purview to worry about offsite issues. But isn't a traffic study itself about offsite conditions?
Well, typically, with, say, permitted uses and using the industry standards, is intersections that have more than 100 peak hour trips would be considered a candidate. Given our distribution that we have, once we come to do Route 526 at Wright Debo Road, we do not have 100-trip impact. And again, in the county, and what's that? We're on Wright Debo, correct. But what I'm getting at is, as far as additional county intersections, we don't hit that threshold. It's generally what is utilized when considering a permitted use. If this was a zoning case, then it's usually up to the purview of the board then to decide, you know, how detailed and how extensive that traffic study is done.
Well, the traffic study that you did, did it take into consideration the approval that was given about a year ago for another truck depot on 526 and Patterson?
Well, at Wright Debo and Patterson, my understanding is that...
No, not Wright Debo and Patterson.
I'm sorry, I take that back. 526. There was an approval in 2018 for a contractor's warehouse.
No. There's a truck depot, Patterson, the land has already been cleared, that received approval from this board back maybe, maybe two years ago.
If if I'm understanding correctly, we did a project that was 330,000 square feet, warehouse development that was to the east of Wright Debo Road. And we included that in our analysis as well as another warehouse building of approximately 52,000 square feet. That was the Army Surplus, I think, was the the operator. So we consider those two developments. The development at Patterson, based on, I reviewed the the resolution of approval, the development at Patterson and 526 was a 30,000-square-foot contractor's warehouse. That would generate approximately 30 peak hour trips. In my opinion, that would be included in the growth rate we use. But even if I should add specifically for that development, that traffic to the Wright Debo Road and Route 526 intersection, the levels of service would be generally consistent with what we presented.
I beg to differ on what that property was given approval for. I remember specifically that it was like a truck depot. Anyway, the intersection that will be revamped, for lack of a better word, with all of this new traffic coming in and aligning it with Burke, could it be that maybe a traffic light is required at that intersection now?
If if Wright Debo Road was realigned and extended further east, which would, which requires substantial number of properties, there's a, the traffic volumes are marginal for a traffic signal. But again, where we are realigning Wright Debo Road, so intersects Route 526 approximately 250 feet west of Burke Road. So you're gonna create two separate, two T's.
I thought you, I thought you testified that it was going to align with Burke.
No, I apologize if I've misconstrued that. But it's, the intent here is to realign Wright Debo Road in a westerly direction so that it's offset approximately 250 feet from Burke Road, thereby creating two distinct T-shaped intersections.
That answers my question. I I was concerned. I'm concerned about the the T. You're taking it from an angled street and squaring it off.
That's, that's correct.
But as you can understand from all we've said, we, you know, some of us can picture it, some of us can't. So we really need to see these things. And and I can understand, you know, things get crazy, particularly at this time of year. But we need to see these things.
I understand. And the only reason I had, we haven't generated a formal document is because we're still talking to the property owner and still talking to the county. So we didn't want to present something that may not be the final product. And so I guess the suggestion of preliminary define, is condition of preliminary makes sense to me.
And just a little, just a little more perspective, if I may. The used variance approval for this truck Class A recycling facility that was approved, they had 43 truck trips a day, so we're maybe double that. And they were only required to pay a fair share contribution to the Wright Debo West Commodore intersection. So if they use that approval instead of this, that, those improvements may never be made on Wright Debo until the county gets around to doing it. So at least in this case, if the board was to grant this approval, you know it's going to happen.
That's a little, that's a little bootstrapping.
I'm not sure. I mean, that's what it says.
Only because at that point in time, because it was also offsite, you can't necessarily...
You can on the used variance.
You can't demand the purchase of property.
But you could condition approval on doing the work on the used variance. But anyway, I'm reading, I read the language in the resolution. That's, it says what it says. I didn't, I didn't handle the application. I'm not making it up. It just says what it says. So I'm just trying to put it in perspective that this is a far better solution to that intersection than what we, what is currently approved.
And with, if I may, Mr. Chairman, and with regard to the intersection, the Glories intersection, the Cedar Smolten, 526, 527, 526, since it appears you relegated yourselves to asking for preliminary during, as a condition of preliminary approval, will you at least report back as to the county discussions regarding that intersection as well?
Yes.
As you've indicated.
And I think the county will automatically have some look at that intersection. So yes, we will.
Go ahead, Mr. Stone.
We're talking about Burke, 526 and Wright Debo. Is there any attention being paid to Patterson? The Jazz, the Get School, and the Elm School, and all the bus traffic associated with it? That's gonna be a very busy place at 7:30 in the morning.
Now, this is the intersection of Patterson and 526?
Yeah, there's a couple of schools.
Right. I mean, again, we're we're adding 30 to 40 peak hour trips to that intersection. We hadn't intended to evaluate that location. It may be a location required by the county. We're, again, right now, we're dealing with the intersection improvement specifically. And then we'll be having further discussions as far as the study area along 526.
You've got two Ts there. A T with Burke, then a T with Wright Debo. Right now, Patterson is a T, but there's no light there.
That's correct. I mean, it's my understanding and my knowledge of that area that that location would not require a traffic signal at Patterson, if that's what you're suggesting, and 526. But we can do traffic counts there and and provide an analysis of that intersection if that's something that the board is looking for.
I think it's important.
Yeah, you know, I'm really having a hard time with these, all this truck traffic and and the route that it's taking and the approvals for Jackson 21 and how we're having all of this truck traffic going through these residential areas and on on roads that were not designed for this. Just, I don't know, am I alone in in this, or? Yeah, I mean, you know, and you're competing with school buses and, boy, it just, it's just really not turning out the way that I had expected with this area and with these developments. What about the traffic going the other way out to 537? How does that work, Mr. Kennel?
Well, again, what we had, we had done an assignment that had, was limited to passenger-type vehicles, which would be basically the employees that'd be assigned west on Wright Debo Road, and we're projecting in the, in the morning, approximately 34 vehicles, and in the afternoon, 37 vehicles, two-way on Wright Debo Road going out to Route 537. And again, that would be limited to passenger vehicles only, not truck traffic.
What I mean is, would it... What I mean is, um, would it be possible, I guess, making a left out of there, out of, coming out of Wright Debo onto 537 would be nearly impossible for a tractor trailer without a traffic light there, correct?
Well, there'd be no trucks going out Wright Debo Road to Route 537.
Correct.
Only, only passenger vehicles. We're going to restrict-
Is it not allowed or?
We are gonna, we have developed this site plan and the traffic study is based on prohibiting any trucks on Wright Debo Road from this development west of the site.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
So I, I think the message, not only for, um, thank you, for, for this applicant, um, although you're, this applicant is at the head of this spear, so to speak, but the message of the planning board to the county over the last year and a half, quite frankly, has been loud and clear, and that is that the county needs to, uh, be more aware of the master plan of the township and catch up. It's continually been a disappointment to this board, I think globally, that the county, while it may have been, had some foresight in dualizing County Line Road, um, to, from the, basically from the Lakewood border to, um, the lake, to Jackson Mills, it's done nothing past that west. Uh, for instance, and a board member just reminded, specifically reminded me, but it's important. The planning board just found that, that it can, to be consistent with the master plan, that it also permit, as a permitted use, distribution centers, fulfillment centers and warehouses. So that consistency with the master plan over fifteen years has not, humbly, I guess, has not been really caught up to by the county. So the direction that I think the board is giving, not I think, the direction the board is giving, I'll speak in the affirmative, this applicant, between preliminary and final, should the, app, should the board grant the preliminary approval for permitted use. And I think that's important for the board to recognize is that the applicant needs to take the message down to the county, that it's time to look from, on what I used to still call County Line Road, I almost slipped, West Common or Boulevard, from Jackson Mills, west, at least past Patterson, um, to the intersection with 571. Because the master plan has been relatively consistent for fifteen years. The county hasn't seen fit to make the proper improvements.
Any comment on that?
Do you agree with that? I mean, do you see that? I, I see Mr. McFarland saying yes. I mean, that's the message, because it behooves you as an applicant to get on top of us, on top of this with the county.
For that, I mean, just looking at it from a property owner's point of view, you have a property zone for warehouse, right? We're going to develop it for warehouse. We're going, or the law says all we have to do is get you onto the road and then it's your problem going forward. We're going beyond that and we're going to redo an entire intersection.
You're advocating, I'm interrupting on purpose, excuse me.
As-
Uh, you've, but you're overtrying the case. I think the board fully, I, not I think, again, I know the board fully recognizes its legal obligations and requirements as it relates to your applicant's application. Sorry for the, uh, for, for that use of the English language. Semi-colon, nevertheless, you're hearing the board say, look, Jackson Township is, the economy is finally caught up with the township's master plan, even though the county has not. It behooves this applicant, as well as the other applicants, along County, along S. Commodore, right, to take that message down to the county to follow through on Jackson's master plan.
And, and we have no problem taking the message over. The message is fine. It's, it, writing the check to solve the global problem is the problem we have. But to pass the message on, no problem.
Also, listen, you, you're stating that, you know, this is a, uh, conforming application, that's what it's on for and so forth. This board also has to look at the safety aspect of it and what is good for the residents of Jackson. Now, everywhere I look on this application, I'm seeing safety issues. I'm, I'm seeing possibly unsafe roads. We have unsafe turning radiuses and, and the list just goes on and on. That this all needs to be taken care of. And, and, and I hate, I'm, I'm telling you, it's not safe the way it is. And that's what I'm basing my decision on.
Understood. And, um, I'm not going to debate the safety or not the safety again. Well, the only safety that we're obligated to meet legally is exiting the site. The rest of it is not our problem, but we're solving a good chunk of the problem. But all we have to do is get them on the road. That's the only thing we have to do legally. So it's not rea, it's not reasonable to say to an applicant, variance redo, we want you to fix the entire global traffic situation.
Yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not arguing.
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that when I see an unsafe situation, okay, I have to react.
I agree. And we have no problem telling the county and you could, if it's approved, you could put in the resolution specific language of exactly what they want, you want the county to look at. We have no problem with that. We'll work with you and the county. We're, we, we don't want an unsafe condition either, but there's certainly a, a dollar that doesn't work for an applicant if he has to fix twelve intersections because they're all impacted.
Okay. Ms. Campbell?
We're between a rock and a hard place in town. We live here, you don't. Um, and, and we want the tax ratables. We want to fulfill the master plan. Um, we know one ninety-five is crucial to this whole operation. And yet, our obligation is to the citizens, uh, and so, you know, we, we're in between a rock and a hard place. And, and your project is certainly, you know, it, it is a good product. It's a good project. It's, but it's tough when, you know, when we're going through these neighborhoods and school buses and, you know, all this kind of stuff. So I do appreciate your realignment and, you know, we have all these crooked roads and odd intersections and, and we're grateful that you're going to address that. Um, but there's much work to be done there. Thank you.
Because these roads were never designed to do this. And that, that's the problem.
Right.
So, all right. So with that said, um, I, I think we have reached somewhat of an agreement.
Yes.
Um, so unless you have further testimony, I'd like to open it up to the public. If anyone cares to wit, uh, cares to comment on this, uh, application, please step up to the microphone. Don't everybody run it, run up at once. Okay. Mr. Herring?
So you know who you're coming for?
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, okay. All right, we beat that horse.
Yes, we did. That concludes our presentation, Mr. Chair. We have nothing further to offer. We're here to answer any questions that the board may have, or it's professionals.
Okay. So everybody understands what's on the table here now that they, um, have made these agreements and, um, all it's condition of preliminary approval.
Correct. Only.
Thank you. Um, is everyone on board with that? For preliminary, preliminary only. Okay. That being said, can I get a motion?
I move to accept, to accept, uh, preliminary, um, on this project with, uh, stipulations that we've agreed to as far as, uh, visualization, some plans, some things we can see would, that our residents can see what's going on.
County buy-in. County buy-in.
And the county buy.
Right.
Second.
Okay. May I have a little call, please?
Mr. Dolan?
Yes, so it's been beaten pretty good, but with the provisions, uh, yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Let's take a, um, five-minute break. Okay.
And let's see what we have now. We have block seven, three, zero, nine lots twelve and thirteen, Jackson Project LLC. Mr. Clea.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. An application for preliminary and final major site plan associated with the construction of a two-story eleven thousand, three hundred and forty square foot office building. Five thousand forty square foot is on the first floor and sixty-three hundred square foot is located on the second floor. And there is no basement in involved with the application. Um, the project is um, it does require variance approval for deficient lot area and depth as well as front setback. The area and depth are part and parcel to the property in question. But there is a front yard setback variance that's required and some potential variance for a parking offset to a residential use. Just some testimony from the applicant. If we have any residential uses joining the property that will require a ten-foot setback to the to the parking area. Otherwise, a twenty square, twenty foot setback is would be required. The project based on the overall square footage, an environmental impact statement is required. The applicant has not provided one. So some supportive testimony from the applicant regarding that that submission waiver request, as well as any comments that might have been received from the from the local environmental commission. Some testimony from the applicant as far as anticipated days and hours of operations, site utilization, number of employees. The applicant has provided a traffic impact analysis. So some testimony from the applicant regarding the findings of that report. The project is on West County Line Road, a county roadway facility. So the approval of the driveways are right in and right out configuration will be subject to review and approval by the the Ocean County Planning Board. There is one design exception as far as the parking goes. Ten-foot internal safety islands are required, and we have less than that. I believe it's probably around six feet. The applicant applicant is compliant with the parking regulations. Fifty-five spaces is required. Fifty-seven spaces is provided. We review the grading and the drainage and take no exceptions to the to the design. We have some comments that we provided directly to the applicant's engineer. We reviewed the lighting and landscaping, some testimony from the applicant regarding any residential buffering that's might be required. For our two sign variances, we've identified the ground sign area thirty square feet is permitted and seventy-two square feet is proposed. And a ground sign setback where twenty-five feet is required and fifteen square, fifteen feet is proposed. That's all this time.
Thank you. Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a report dated December thirteenth of this year. Property is located in the H C Highway Commercial Zoning District.
Commercial office space is in fact a permitted use. Mr. Clea got all of the variances. We listed six. I believe there's a seventh that may be required for the location of the dumpster as an accessory structure. We've got some testimony from the applicant regarding that. There are a number of design waivers that are listed in our report, which would probably take a little longer than the board would like. I would ask the applicant simply to indicate as they go through the traffic section of our traffic department section of our report and the lighting and landscaping section of our report to indicate whether any of the waivers that are listed in the report are being requested by the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Salvatore Alfieri on behalf of the applicant. Before, I just have a few housekeeping things before we get to the testimony. I believe this is an undersized light lot. So I sent buy sell letters to the contiguous property owners, and I'm almost certain I submitted them to the board as exhibits, but if I didn't, I will. I did send certified letters. We did get a response from one of the neighbors, which I'll give to Mr. Gertner in a moment. And then Mr. McFarland will talk about that because we need, we're going to need some guidance from the board as to on how we should proceed, if at all. It's from a name which I can't pronounce, but I'm going to hand it to Mr. Gertner. He might do better, but it says, as the owners of block seven, three, oh, nine lot four, Seven Oak Drive, we want to discuss selling some of our footage in the rear of our property to have the lots in question conform or nearly conform with the current zoning ordinance. Please be sure to make this. Please make sure to note this at our hearing on December twentieth. So since I got this email, I wanted the board to have it. And Mr. McFarland will go into that. Other than that response, I did not receive any other responses to the buy sell letters that were submitted or sent to the adjacent property owners. And we have with us Graham McFarland, who our engineer planner. We have Scott Kennel, our traffic expert. We also have our architect. We don't expect to finish this application tonight, so we're not going to keep you very late, but we want to get as far as we can so we can accomplish as much as possible. And we're going to call Mr. McFarland.
I do. For the record, Graham McFarland, professional engineer, professional planner, principal of professional design design services, previously here before this board on many occasions, offering testimony tonight for both professional engineering and professional planning items.
Licensed in New Jersey, right?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mr. McFarland, you handed out a package to the board members. Could you identify what that is?
I did. I handed out a package of the board members that shows exhibits A one through A five, which we had submitted electronically to the board in support of the application. So we'll be, we'll be going through those on the on the screen tonight. So the board will have the benefit of having those at their fingertips to hopefully make everything, everything nice and clear. You can see that up on the screen. We already had A one, A one posted. A one is a cover sheet of the of the plan. It shows the location of the property on County Line Road. It's currently two lots, lots twelve and thirteen in in block, block seventy-three, oh, nine. The property is in the highway commercial zone. This entire block, including the properties that front on County Line, as well as the properties that front on Oak Drive behind the property, they're all located in the highway commercial zone. As Mr. Alfieri said, we did send out to the adjoining property owners requests to buy or sell because this lot is is undersized. After consolidation, lot lots twelve and thirteen with total of about thirty-seven thousand square feet. In this highway commercial zone, the the minimum lot size is forty thousand square feet. If we were to buy part of or sell part of, you know, lot lot four is the the adjoining owner who indicated a possible interest in selling part of their property. Their existing lot is two hundred feet by a hundred feet. So their existing lot is only twenty thousand square feet. There's no way that that buying, you know, part of their lot brings brings anything into more conformance with the zone requirements. So there's really no way to remedy that variance other than to buy, other than to buy, you know, entire parcels and merge entire parcels. And just for 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 information, there's not one property in this entire block that conforms to the minimum lot size. Every every lot in this in that particular block is below the is below the lot size. Anthony, if you can maybe just go to A four for me real quick. I just want to point something out on that.
Thank you.
So I I also have an aerial which we had marked as A four. This aerial shows the proposed building footprint. It shows the the existing buildings along County Line Road. It also shows the existing lots. You can see lot, you know, we have lot nine, lot ten, lot eleven, twelve and thirteen are the are the subject. Fourteen and then fifteen and sixteen are, you know, combined into into one lot. Again, for reference, the subject lot is thirty-seven thousand square feet, where forty thousand square feet is required. These adjoining lots are basically, you know, twenty thousand, eighteen to twenty thousand square feet. And then all the lots that front on Oak Drive in the back, back here are again on that twenty thousand square foot square foot lot size. So the request from an adjoining property owner to sell a part of their property, you know, does nothing to to bring our property into performance and it, you know, would make their properties further from from performance. So I don't think that would benefit the the application in in any fashion.
Okay, we'll do.
Right. So I I believe when we when we put all of that into the hopper, that means that our lot has a hardship for grant of the two variances, which are the the lot area and and the lot depth as the you know, as the existing conditions. Again, they they would qualify for for granted hardship variance. As we get to to the other merits of the application, I've already already touched on it. Since I have this exhibit up, I'll talk about first how we decided to lay out and locate the proposed building because that's a very important, important component of this application. You can see the proposed building footprint basically in the center, in the center of this exhibit outlined in outlined in teal. Within this zone, the required front yard setback is is sixty feet. We did a, we did a study of the existing development pattern, where the existing buildings fall on on the street when we were deciding where we wanted to locate this building and what kind of presentation we wanted it to have. So you can see that we tabulated the existing setback on all of the lots that front eye County Line Road within this block. And starting in, starting with lot nine at the corner of County Line and Stuben, this building is set back thirty-six feet from the right of way right now. Lot ten is set back thirty-one feet from the right of way line. Lot eleven is set back thirty-two feet from the right of way line. On the subject premises, there there were two buildings. One building currently exists is number twenty fifty-six. This number twenty fifty-two is the previous building, which has now been demolished. Those buildings were twenty fifty-two was twenty-six feet. And the twenty fifty-six was seventeen feet from the right of way line. So as we approach this property from the east, all of these projects, all of these existing buildings are are set at, you know, approximately approximately thirty feet front yard setback. The the two buildings to the west are set back further from the road. Lot fourteen is set back seventy-five feet. And on lot sixteen, the building is set back eighty-three feet. So one thing we, one thing that we we did was deciding, you know, where where to put this building. And we decided that it was appropriate to put this building in a location that would not have any any negative impact upon the adjoining businesses, but would also respect and take into consideration the existing, the existing streetscape and proximity of the three buildings to the east. So we decided to set set back the proposed building forty feet from the proposed right of way line. You can also see that we did evaluate site visibility to the adjoining property. A little hard to see on this screen from this distance, but on the packet that I gave the board members, you can see there are, there are two green lines we showed that represent the line of sight visibility. So you can see that following the, from the front corner of twenty fifty-six So you can see that following the, from the front corner of 2056 to the center of the adjoining building, center of the adjoining building here, back to the center of the roadway, that site visibility currently is about 295 feet. Again, it's based upon where existing 2056 is. When we push this building back to a 40-foot setback and have our new building shown, that site visibility increases further into sight of the adjoining and it increases, you know, further along the center line of, of the travel lane of County Line Road. So that site visibility is about five, is about 500 feet. So that site visibility to the next adjoining driveway is, you know, is increased significantly and in my opinion, of course, not being negatively, negatively impacted. That, of course, is one of the tests for the grant of the variance, is having no negative impact upon adjoining properties and, and showing compliance with the, with the master plan and with the, with the zone plan. Anthony, if you can go to A3 for me next? And maybe just blow it up a little bit for us. So A3 is the, is a landscape plan that was submitted in support of the application. Again, in, in concert with deciding how far to set back this building, our, our thought process was, was simple that we wanted to make the streetscape very, very attractive. We felt it was more appropriate if we, if we located this building closer, provided, you know, upgraded landscaping in the form of a little, a little landscape plaza with, with a seating wall and then some enhanced landscaping treatments at the front of the building. The alternative, you know, we could have pushed this building further back and stacked the front of this building with some parking spaces. And that plan, you know, would have complied with the, with the zone requirements. We felt this was a better design, better design objective. And we think it, it improves the, the streetscape in this area and benefits the, the community. That's why we're requesting relief related to the, related to the front yard setback. And Anthony, next, if you can go to A4 for me? No, I'm sorry, A5? A5 is a rendering of the, of the building. You can also see that we mounted a display of A5 over here on the, on the board. You can see that when, you can see that this building is proposed to be, as, you know, we consider this a gateway structure between the border of, of Lakewood and Jackson. We considered, we consider this a, a progressive design. My client's vision was to develop something that's going to be unique and have some, you know, some value of presentation, certainly. You can see the, some, you know, some rendering of the plaza that we envisioned having in front of the, front of the site. And you can see the architectural treatments that the architect is, is considering in, in, in developing this parcel. One of the reasons why, you know, Mr. Alfieri stated in the beginning that we don't foresee pushing this whole thing through tonight. We wanted to get some feedback on, on this architectural concept, moving, moving this, this plan forward. You know, the project team did have some discussions about, about this particular design, design. And some of us came up with some interesting adjectives. But in, in concert, I think we've all kind of settled that we think it's a, think it's an innovative design that would, that would serve the town, town well. Certainly a huge upgrade over what exists on this property today, which is one dilapidated, dilapidated building, one building that has already been, been demolished. But we certainly would, would welcome some, some input from the board as to this concept as we, as we move this project forward. And just for, just for clarification, the architectural plans that were submitted in, in support of the application initially did call out some additional floor areas such as a mezzanine space and, and some rooftop spaces. Again, we, we've had some discussions internally with our project team and have decided to, to, to basically remove most of those spaces from the building because I think they're, they're a little confusing conceptually as to what they're going to be used for and what kind of limitations could be imposed on them. So this plan represents a, basically a, a pretty straightforward two-story building. The applicant would still like to have some use of the rooftop as a, as an outdoor amenity space where people may be able to go for a break or to take a phone call or things along, along those lines. We do, we have gotten some feedback from, I believe the neighbors in the back here, Sal, if I'm, if I'm correct. We have gotten some feedback from neighbors in the back who were, you know, a little concerned about activities occurring on the rooftop. And I think we've agreed that we'd like to limit any activities on the rooftop to basically the front two-thirds of the, of that roof area so that they would be, you know, far enough away from any adjoining. It is certainly our objective to, you know, to, to be good neighbors and not cause any negative impact to, to any of those people who live on the adjoining properties.
And, and while we're on the subject of the rooftop, the applicant also agreed that it would only be for the use of the tenants. It's not something that would be open to the public. And also that it would be nine to five, nothing after 5:00 PM. So there would not be any activity there later than five.
And just to clean up a couple of other items that were addressed in the, in the professionals' reviews. One relates to, to parking area setback to residential property line at the back of the property, the north end of the property. Or, ordinance would require 20-foot setback. We have 10 feet proposed to offset or, or reduce any impact. We do have a privacy fence and we do have landscaping proposed between the edge of the curbing and the property line back here. So we believe that, that would offset any negative impact associated with that, with that relief. We do have two variances requested for the, for the sign. The site identification sign located right about in that area. It is shown on our, on our site plan. What we've proposed is a sign with a, with an area of 72 square feet, 12 feet by six feet. Your ordinance requires 30 square feet, which you've heard me testify many times. I believe that 30 square feet is just, is just so small and hard to, hard to see when you have a, any, any sort of multi-tenant facility. So my, my opinion is that 72 square feet is a reasonable and appropriate si- size, size of sign area to allow for identification of a multi-tenant building such as this. So again, that sign would be 12 feet wide by six feet high, would not have any impact upon visibility. We've also proposed it closer to the, the right of way line than ordinance requires. Ordinance would require the sign to be set back 25 feet. The further the sign gets set back, the harder it is to, to read and, and the less time approach and motorists would have. So I believe it's in public interest to have that sign located a little bit closer to the streets. We have that sign proposed at 15 feet setback from the existing right-of-way line. And then there were, I mean, there were a couple of design waivers associated with the, with the driveway design that relate to the, the entrance throat and the exit throat. Your ordinance has specific requirements for entrance throat length and, and exit throat length. For this one-way circulation, I believe that what we have designed here is, is perfectly safe and suitable. This allows for at least three cars to stack on the entrance drive. In the event that a car was backing out of one of these first two spaces, there's plenty of, of visibility and plenty of time for that, you know, entering motorists to, to make a decision and still safely enter the site and progress to another spot or wait for that spot. And on the exit drive, we have a similar, similar argument that your ordinance requires. I believe it's 40, 40 feet. And we're a little bit short of that. On the same token, that anybody exiting the site has more than adequate visibility, well in excess of any county requirement or actual requirement to, to see any exiting vehicles and, and make decisions. And again, I believe it would be perfectly safe and supports the request for those, for those two waivers.
Graham, one follow-up on the variances. Even though we're undersized 37,000 square feet versus 40,000 square feet, we do comply with, we're under both the building coverage and the impervious coverage. So we're not overbuilding in relation to the size. Is that correct?
That's correct. We're not seeking any waivers directly related to those items other than the front yard setback I've talked about, which I, I believe there are, are many reasons to support that request.
So you, let's, if we can now get into some of the technical comments that are in the board professional reports?
Sure.
First, can you describe how the stormwater management is going to operate?
Yes. Well, when we submitted this plan initially, we did not have any, any component for stormwater management other than local collection since the property is below the threshold of major development. However, we did get some comments back from, from the county. And after getting some comments back from the county, although it's not on the, the plans that you have before you, we have added a, a recharge system in the back of the building. So that will address any concerns related to stormwater management. That recharge system would promote groundwater recharge and then would be tied into the county collection system in County Line Road.
And Mr. Peters pointed out a potential variance for the dumpster. I, I'm not sure we understood or commented on that.
He, he said that the dumpster may need relief as to accessory structure setback. I don't think we've ever seen that interpretation here previously. I think the, the ordinance, and Ernie will, will guide me or tell me if I'm wrong, but whether the ordinance has any exemption or does, you know, does require that, that variance for the, for the refuse If the, if the variance is needed, I would, I would say that we have it located as far as possible from the, from the sideline. We do have it 25 feet from the rear property line. I believe we would need that relief from the side property line as we have about 18 feet. It's, it's located adjacent to an existing commercial property, would not have any negative impact. And we do have, Anthony, can you get the landscaping plan back up, which was A3 for me? Referring to A3, you can see the dumpster in the back left corner of the site, you know, with landscaping around it in accordance with ordinance requirements. So if the relief is judged to be necessary, we would ask for that relief.
And, and how is that land, that dumpster enclosed?
We have a fence enclosure and landscaping.
There's also an environmental impact statement waiver that was
Yeah, but I, I don't believe that, that statement was correct. I think the ordinance requires an EIS for 20,000 square feet. And we have a floor area of about 11,000 square feet. So I don't believe we need, need to, need that waiver.
And then in terms of the use, this is a general office use, not medical. Is that correct?
Correct. General office with parking required at one space per, per 200 square feet.
And conforming with, as relates to parking?
Correct. And just one technical item that Mr. Cle pointed out, I think he talked about one of the, one of the islands, which I believe he referred to this one on the back left corner, which I think is about six feet wide. So we would ask for that design waiver. Where your ordinance requires 10 feet and we have that one six feet wide.
Can you describe the lighting and landscaping in a little more detail?
Yes. The landscaping plan, again, we would have a plaza area in the front with a, with a seating wall and some low-level landscaping along its frontage. We have some trees and shrubs on, on the sides and also in the rear of the property, we have a privacy fence. And then we have some buffering, landscape buffering to minimize impact to adjoining property owners.
And Mr. Cle had suggested that, that, that front yard island area be depressed slightly to, to assist in the stormwater, at least the new regulations. Is that something that could work?
Yeah. Well, I'll, I'll agree to, agree to take a look at that and, and work that out with Mr. Cle.
Okay. And then in terms of site lighting, what's proposed?
Site, as to site lighting, we will have, we will have one, two, three, four, looks like six, six freestanding poles, all pointed to the, all pointed to the inside. So they should not have any negative impact to adjoining property owners.
There, there were various more technical comments contained in, at least in Mr. Cle's report. Are you in a position to agree to address those technical comments?
Um, yes.
Okay. And then turning to Mr. Peters' report, again, he, water, this is public water and source.
Yes.
And there are also various technical comments contained in that report. Are there any that you need to comment on or can you agree to, to, to comply with them?
No, I think we'll, we'll agree to address the comments. And, and of course, we request the variances and waivers as we've discussed, as we've discussed here tonight. I think there was a, just one other comment in Mr. Cle's report. Yes, Mr. Cle pointed out that we do not have a loading zone proposed for this building. We don't believe there's any necessary for an office of, of this type, although your ordinance does, does require it. Again, just, they're not necessary for a building of, of this type. And before, before I close, Anthony, if you can just bring up maybe those two new, those two new renderings that we were just able to get emailed over to you? Just so the board sees, and have the benefit of seeing them, and anybody who may be at home watching it, like Mr. Ricordi. So you can see, these are two renderings that were emailed. We, the architect tried to email them today, but there was some, some glitch and some corruption in the file. But anyway, this is, this is the same as the rendering that I, I had up earlier, you know, ba- basically showing a, an isometric view of the building. And again, the scheme architecturally and, and finishes that are being, being considered for this, for this building. I think I had marked that as A7, A7, Sal, for the record. And then Anthony, maybe flip to the other one also. The other one I think is going to be that, that bird's eye view, similar to what I had already shown, but just to make sure. Yeah. So that, that's similar to, to the one I was already showing. It shows basically the bird's eye view, isometric of the, of the proposed building. And again, the building, you know, changed to just a, just a two-story with, with rooftop. No, no mezzanine space, none of those other spaces that are, that are shown on the architectural plans that are in the package that was initially delivered to the board. No basement, slab on grade.
And finally, although you generally described the variances and why they were justified, can you put more specific planning testimony on the record?
Uh, sure. And just, just to touch on those items, I believe that, you know, that this application and the, the variances that are requested, when you look at this project in total, this application satisfies goals of the master plan. It promotes development with, with more business, improves the tax rate base, provides economic growth. Those are all important points that are discussed many times throughout the, throughout the Jackson Township master plan. It brings the site more into conformance with zoning than the current situation, which is, you know, with the two individual lots with buildings that are, you know, whatever, 15 and 17 feet from the, from the site. And these variances can be granted without any significant impact to the zone plan and without any impairment to, to the master plan or any, any negative impact to adjoining property owners.
That's all we have of Mr. McFarland, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Campbell. I, I couldn't be more pleased to have people come before us with things we can see and, and that are aesthetically attractive, interesting, a, a nice introduction to Jackson and its modernity. I think you've done a terrific job on, on the architectural end. So I appreciate that. Usually I would suggest or ask about solar because, you know, flat roofs, no trees around, and it's a good, it's a good area for solar. I'm, I'm not so certain about the use of the rooftop, although I like the idea. I think it's a good idea. There might be some areas that you could consider solar. On top of the, where the staircase is, there's a, looks like there's a, windows on top to the right. To the left, there looks like there may be some areas for solar, just enough to power your external lighting, for instance.
Well, I, I don't think our client would object to providing solar to the extent that he can, while still, while still maintaining, you know, some, some use of, like I said, basically the, you know, the front two-thirds of, of the rooftop area.
Good. Even if, even the back, you know, even Good, even if, even the back, you know, even if they could use the back and that might satisfy neighbors as well.
Right.
But I, I, I'm just delighted with the, with the architecture. I, I think it's very exciting.
Thank you.
Show a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
You know, it's amazing because I have tremendous respect for you and it's interesting for me. It's all in the eye of the beholder because to me, the architecture is bizarre. So I'm interested to find out what theme was genre that it is, but because I'm not an architect, so I'm interested to know a genre.
And that, and that's why Mr. McFarlane, at the beginning, what we wanted your input because it is so unique and we're not sure how it would be received.
Is that mirrored? Is that, was I understanding?
We have a, we have our architect present. I, I can't answer that.
At some point, I'd be interested to know how the sun reflecting off the mirrors may impact travel of cars that are driving down the roadway. And I do, but I have a couple of questions for our profession. I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's one of the first questions I asked him also.
Yeah, because I'm interested in the safety issue of cars getting hit with sunlight into their windshields from the different vantage points of that mirrored building. We could talk about that, I think. But I got a couple of questions for our planners. What's the total height of this building in feet, you know, with, now, are we talking about people having events up there, like physically standing on the roof?
Well, I'm not going to testify at all for Mr. McFarlane. So he's going to tell you how tall the building is and tell you if I think I agree with them. And he's going to tell you what they are, aren't going to do on the roof.
What does that mean? I'm sorry, let me answer my questions to you. Are you planning on having people standing on the roof?
Yes, I believe that people would go up there as, as an outdoor air or open amenity that they may utilize to go take a phone call, to go up and, and, you know, take a break for a few minutes. We're not.
How many feet is that? I'm sorry, how many feet up is, and then it's, it's hard to tell the, what is it, four foot, five foot? What is the lip of the building? So, you know.
Well, again, why don't we get, why don't we get Rick up to talk about some of these.
You want, you want the architect up now to answer those?
Well, I wanted to start with, what's the, the, the height of that building and the other buildings adjoining? What are the other, not your site? What are the building heights on the, on the corridor there?
Just to, to start answering, just to give you some information, we're not asking for any relief on, on a building height. And, and Ernie, if you're flipping through the plans, understand that the plans you have are not reflective of what the proposal is currently. Those, those plans showed that mezzanine space and some other elements that have been.
At, at some point, you got to make a record if you're going to ask the board to make a decision.
Understood.
You're gonna, you're gonna have to tell us what you're doing.
Understood.
The reason I wasn't going to use these plans.
Understood, understood. That's why I don't want you, I don't want you diving into those plans and then saying you don't understand the dimension or have questions. And, and frankly, we're willing to come back and, and with, with the updated plans that just weren't finalized yet. But anyway, anyway, the short answer is the building is going to be 35 feet to the rooftop, which, which is permitted in accordance with ordinance requirements.
So would, and how high are the upper nintes? How high is that thing in the middle? How high does that bring that above the 35 feet as a, is that supposed to be an amenity?
Why don't we get the architect?
What's the total height like actual?
Only the architect can answer that. We, we're not capable. We don't know the answer.
Up to the chairman.
You want the architect up now to respond to that?
I'd like, while Mr. McFarlane is here, if anyone has any other questions.
I could hold my questions.
The fence in the back, how high is that going to be?
Six feet high.
Solid or?
Solid vinyl fence is what we would propose.
Would six feet suffice for the neighbors in the back?
Typically, six feet is accepted as adequate height for, for privacy fence. If those neighbors wanted eight foot high fence, we would not object to that.
Would applicant be okay with eight feet?
I'm sorry.
Would applicant be okay with eight feet?
We would be, we would not object to that.
It might need a variance.
Correct. I, I believe, I believe eight foot would require variance, but up to the board.
But we have no objection either way.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McFarlane, on the right hand side of the building, as you're standing on county line, there's a second floor overhang that overhangs some parking spaces. Can you describe for the board the dimensions of those parking spaces and any safety devices that you, you or the architect are installing to make sure someone doesn't drive into this nice looking building? Uh, sure. All those parking spaces would be, would be nine by 18. And on the, again, or Ernie, on the revised plans that we did submit back to, back to the county, we did address some of the technical comments that you guys had in, in your reviews. So our updated plan do show bollards up against the building to protect the building.
My, my concern is that the bollard takes up some space between the building and the end of the parking space. So what's the parking space going to be from the bollard to the rear of the parking space?
Uh, well, I guess, I guess if we measure it from the bollard, it's technically going to be, you know, what's called seven, 17 and a half feet.
No, it's your design. What I'm saying is that 18, it's not an 18 foot space. If you put a bollard in front of it. Normally you'd have curbing, you'd be able to overhang the curbing somewhat. So I, I think it deserves some consideration of what size vehicle is going to go under there? How much room is there? And can it be safely designed?
Well, we could, we could certainly limit those spaces to compact cars by signage. If that would address some of, some of that concern. The other alternative is if we, if we don't think bollards are right alternative, we can use parking bumpers. So my concern is that how are you going to regulate vehicles that park there in what will obviously be a substandard depth parking space? So it's not like we have 30 foot wide drive aisles, we have 24 foot wide drive aisles. It's not like we have 20 foot parking spaces. We have 18 foot wide parking spaces. So there's not a lot of extra room in this for those spaces. In fairness, I suspect they're going to be for tenants of the building and not customers. So they're probably only, only going to be used once or twice a day. But still, it's not an 18 foot space if that's how it was laid out, once you put a bumper in. So I think we need some more detail when you return for that. Okay. And Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want just general comments now? Sure, from the professionals?
As they relate to the engineering.
Mr. McFarlane.
Yeah.
Generally speaking, they have two existing condition variances which they've testified to, which creates their hardship. The other five variances respectfully, they can address. They can make everything a little smaller. What I will tell you from a physical planning perspective is that a long county line road, this isn't a 50 foot right away with housing across the street. There's at least an 80 foot wide right of way. There's a four lane highway with a divided island and full shoulders. So when you weigh the testimony of bring the building forward 20 feet, bring the sign forward 10 feet. I think you need to offset that with the idea that we're not putting it in a residential subdivision. We're a normal street in Jackson Township. It's a county road, call it a boulevard style because there's a, you know, luckily it's not the ugly Jersey barriers. But there is a grassed island median, there's two full lane, two full width travel lanes and a full shoulder on each side. So the impact of the people who are across the street from that starts to be reduced. Something because there's four full lanes of traffic, an island and two shoulders. But I do need to sort of point out for the record that they could address the five proposed variances. But I think Mr. McFarlane has made the argument based upon what exists along County Line Road. With respect to the, the waivers, the only waiver I'd spend any time talking about is the loading zone. While I understand an office building doesn't need a loading zone, I think an office building needs a delivery space.
Yes.
And I think we ought to just pick one out, just like at some point, we're going to have to provide handy, accessible spaces on the site. I would recommend to the applicant that they consider striping a delivery space. Understanding that because otherwise someone's going to park where they don't belong. And that would just be our recommendation with regards to the loading waiver. And that's all I would have for now.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Just, just, just to follow up as far as the design exceptions and the one related to the width of the safety island. Ram, why not, why not make it comply 10 feet?
Is it possible to make it comply? Sure, sure it's possible, but the, the plan that we prepared, we have six feet. I believe that six feet is adequate, given, given the location of that safety island in the back left corner, back left corner of the building. It's not going to be visible from the street, it's still going to be landscaped. And it allows us to develop the site in the fashion that we have proposed here tonight.
But if the ordinance requires 10, why not make it 10 while the rest of them are?
Uh, well, we're asking for, for that relief, the, the the, the.
Would we lose the space?
Well, we, we would lose a parking space if we, if we had to comply. The plan right now complies with 57 parking spaces, or 57 are, are required by ordinance with a couple of the waivers that we're requesting. I believe they're all of minimal impact and don't substantially affect the, the, you know, the, the overall design. And the plan that we presented, I believe is, is perfectly suitable and safe.
I, I think I mentioned to the board before, just when I see an island below minimum standards, that, that can comply, it brings me back to the building too big. Granted, only one spot in this particular case, but if you made it comply per ordinance standards, you would lose a parking space and you'd be short one spot, not that that's the end of the world. But I haven't heard a good reason why it can't be 10 feet.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I, I would think that you designated a, a, a parking space for specifically loading or unloading. Now you reduce the overall parking count available to everybody.
So if they comply, but yeah, I just want to make sure I'm clear. So if they comply with the suggestion that reduces the parking from 57 to 56, and if they comply further with the, and maybe that design.
Correct.
Also, the overhead, I was wondering, maybe that could be utilized for charging stations for electric vehicles under there?
Thought that's, that makes sense.
Okay. Oh, that was Sean's idea. Okay. Want to bring up your next witness unless?
Yes. We could get Mr. Wall's questions answered now.
Do you want me to ask him again?
Wait, let's.
We have to qualify.
Just thank you for raising your hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board? We represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, your affiliation and then through the chairman, your credentials, please?
Sure. Richard Tokarski, T O K A R S K I. I'm a principal at the firm of Tokarski Millman Architects located in Wall, New Jersey. And I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I've appeared before Jackson Planning Board, Zoning Board and numerous boards throughout the state over the last 20 years.
And before we get to the questions, what is that material that the building is designed as on that exhibit?
The part that you see as reflective is glass. It's not intended to be mirrored. It's, you know, it's a architectural rendering, so it has some reflection to it. It will be glass, but not, you know, mirror.
Not mirrored glass.
Correct.
So, you know, I, I look at that and it's like art, you know, some people interpret it one way and others interpret it another way. So, and that's what makes it art.
I just have a quick question for Mr. Gerner on a legal question. I may be mistaken on this. Are you appointed as township architects in Jackson?
Yes.
Okay. So is there any particular conflict that we should discuss or at least get on the record?
I wasn't aware.
I wasn't aware of that either.
Nor was I.
Okay. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So can we, I just want to address that because I, I sometimes.
So that's a good point because in theory, you cannot waive the conflict. So you're appointed for the calendar year 2021. Have you taken on a position?
We have not done any work for the town at this point. We've just been appointed.
Okay. So just be wary of that in, in the future and taking jobs you can't pick and choose.
I think I'm your partner, very nice guy, but I'm just, I'm hearing the same, the name and I just wanted to make sure if it's the same firm as a fellow I met who did a tour of the facilities.
Yes.
Okay.
Because some of the, for instance, in theory, as, as the municipal architect, there may be plan reviews before the planning board and the like, and it places you in a position of a conflict where the board can't waive it. Should talk to your counsel about that, but so if you haven't done work yet and merely have the appointment, I don't perceive that a conflict at this point.
Okay. And I just didn't want to be in a position of a failure to disclose something that may be material. And we can certainly take that, you know, with your partner offline.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Wall, you had some other questions?
I did. I just, from the dirt to the top of that structure on the top of the roof, how many feet is that?
That is 41 feet. By the definition of building height, the roof height will be at 31 feet off of average grade. And then the top of the appendatures, which is the bulkhead of the stairs and the skylight would be at 41 feet, which is in conformance with the zoning ordinance. It also has a four foot parapet around the exterior. So the rim or parapet of the building would be at 35 feet.
Okay. And then the design, you can't tell, I mean, it's the, all the way you, you can draw these things many different ways, but it's not clear how many feet. I've heard that you want to use two thirds for people to be up, up outside on the roof.
Correct. That's what we're proposing.
Okay. So now it's 41 feet to the structure. That's, to me, I interpret that as a structure that could be utilized in many different ways. We don't know yet. We're going to talk about that. And so it's 41 feet, 35 is the height requirement to the actual building, Mr. Peters? Is it 35?
Correct.
All right. So that structure, how many feet is it? 10 by 20? It's hard to tell. What's the length and what's the length and width?
Of the top bulkhead?
Whatever that, I'm sorry, however you describe it. And how many people can fit in that? I'd be interested to know as well. Is that, Mr. Peters, that's own office or is it zone, can it be for? I'm not sure what use would have two thirds of people on the roof.
Well, so this, the skylight portion, what you see, the skylight is roughly 21 feet by 21 feet and the elevator bulkhead is 18, 9.
But how, how wide is the building from end to end? I think that was more, you want to know what the usable area is, I assume, right, for the, the roof activity?
I'm thinking of different areas where you can have music parties, different things like that, different events.
There won't be parties and there'll be no music.
I don't know that.
Okay, you're right. I didn't say that before, but we would agree.
41, that's why I'm just trying to understand what we're dealing with.
Yeah. So the roof space is 70 feet by 90 feet.
Okay. And how many people fit on the roof as, as you're designing it?
It would be, you know, used for the inhabitants of the building. We haven't done an egress calculation to see how many people you can legally fit up there. It's, it is an amenity space. It's not to be rented out. It's for the employees within the building to basically be able to go up and you get some fresh air and utilize the space up there. And as it was stated before, it's used from nine to five and during normal business hours for the occupants of the building.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, is there any furniture posted up there?
I would suppose that, you know, when we do a terrace up there, that there'd be some, you know, seating, possibly like, you know, outdoor, you know, furniture.
Grill?
No grills.
There were, there were, the reason we didn't finish, sorry, Ernie, we, the reason we said we're not going to finish tonight is there was really two unique aspects of this application, the rooftop and the architectural design. So we wanted to get your input. So when we came back, we could address those two, obviously anything else. But those were the two things we really needed help with, with the board. Sorry, go there, Ernie.
Mr. Chairman, at some point, the detailed description of the proposed use of this, of the roof or the amenity space would determine whether or not it's calculated as building area. Okay. If you're going to, if you're going to put seating up there for people and call it an open area, at some point, we're going to cross that undefined threshold. And quite frankly, our land use ordinance probably. And quite frankly, our land use ordinance probably doesn't deal with what turns a roof into building space. So again, this is, I don't want to, it may be the chicken or the egg, we need a detailed description of the proposed use. Because normally if we have a hip roof or something that you wouldn't be able to go out and walk on. We don't ask what the use of the attic or the roof is. In this particular case, because it's a flat roof, we're going to need some description if they're going to design and intend to utilize the roof for human occupancy. Charles here?
We, um, we, we touched on, we looked at that when we looked at the definition of gross floor area of the ordinance. We don't, and, and gross floor area implies that there's roofs and everything, so we don't think it applies, but, um, we're going to definitely have a final answer for you. We don't think the ordinance considers that, um, building area.
Well. But, but you need a detailed description of what's being proposed to determine that. If you had an outdoor seating area at ground level in front of the architectural feature, and it was big enough to use as a cafe, we'd say that's building space, doesn't have a roof on it. And there's nothing that stops anyone from putting a temporary structure on top of the roof and turning it into something else. That's your responsibility to explain it to the board, then the board will determine that, or the board's professionals will recommend to the board what we should or shouldn't consider on that roof. Because quite frankly, it's an enforcement issue. The whole idea of getting a little more out of this and, and sort of thinking outside the box is wonderful until someone complains about it. And the code enforcement officer goes, well, the planning board didn't leave me much to consider here. So it's, it's incumbent upon the applicant to describe to us what they're proposing to do, and for us, quite frankly, to put boundaries on it so that it can, if necessary, be enforced.
Uh, yes, I agree, and I think what, maybe what we're leading up to is maybe a specific statement of operations specifically addressing the roof, uh, rooftop use. As an add-on to the regular statement of operations. Sir, uh, I'd like to ask you, uh, what is, what was your vision and what was your inspiration for this?
Um, to be honest with you, I'm taking over as the architect of record on the project, so the actual design comes from the previous architect who's moved out of state. And I've taken over the project in terms of the architect of record, so I've done a thorough evaluation and analysis from a building standpoint, made some modifications and corrections to it. And, you know, I could speak to, you know, what I know as an architect and what I've discussed with the owners of it, you know, the hexagon shape is current, you know, currently being used throughout, you know, contemporary and modern architecture. The building was designed to give a vision, um, and bring an aesthetic modern element to the building and the facility. That is going to be a, you know, state-of-the-art office built, you know, class A type office building. And the motif of the hexagon was just incorporated into the facade through the use of the balconies, the entrance, and carried throughout the building as a motif.
And of course, these, um, materials are all, um, tried and true weather resistant, so they're going to withhold the stand, time, um?
Yes, with the proposed materials, we'd be using an insulated tinted, um, glass and then an overlay with aluminum composite panels.
And that's what the hexagons are?
Correct.
Made out of? Yes.
Um, in, in my studies of architecture, and I went to Parsons School of Design for a number of years. And I'm always interested in, in new constructions. I was just down in Arlington, Virginia, and many of the buildings are using, uh, roof space uh, for, um, break areas, um, for, uh, somebody going up there with, you know, some furnishings outside and taking their laptop with them. I, I, I think these, these are all new ideas, but just because it's a new idea, doesn't mean we shouldn't embrace them. Uh, I think we, we must stipulate and, uh, regulate as much as we can from our end. That doesn't mean that I don't think it's a great idea. I think anytime somebody from the workplace can get up and walk outside for a while is probably a helpful thing, uh, for the, for the workplace. Also, these amenities are the types of things that help rent space. I've just, I just toured several buildings in Arlington this weekend and noticed that the places with the rooftop amenities were renting much faster and for more money than the, um, buildings without these new, new idea amenities. So certainly we don't need to be opposed to something just because it's not the norm, but we have to protect ourselves and, and we have to protect our residents. And, and the people who will be, uh, renting this space. So I find the design exciting, uh, and I like the idea of exterior space being used, uh, whether it's for, uh, just getting out in the fresh air and the sunshine, I think it's all helpful, so we just need to, we just need to come up with a, with more things in writing. Uh, where we have signage at the door that says no more than blank people on this roof, no, you know, no smoking. That there's going to be a problem, I can see cigarette butts all over the place, or, you know, so we'll have to have some types of equipment up there that would take play, that would take care of those types of things.
Chairman, total agreement.
Okay, anyone else? No? Do you have anything else to contribute regarding this, uh, project?
One quick question.
No, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna jump off the roof and get back on the ground. Uh, we talked earlier about lighting. Where that lighting's gonna be, how's that gonna be laid out?
About the site, the parking lot, the site lighting?
Yes.
Oh, Graham?
The, the site lighting is shown on the, on the lighting plan, that's in the, uh, in the plan set. Um, we just have, we just have, uh, a series of pole-mounted lights, and I think we may have one builder-mounted lights, it's on, uh, it's sheet six of your, of your plan set. So it does show, it should show pole-mounted LED, LED lights, uh, basically around the perimeter of the, of the parking lot.
You know, that raises a question with me that if you have people up there with, saying it nine to five, um, in the wintertime, it gets dark at 4:30. Is there going to be lighting on the, um, on the roof, and if so, what kind?
We don't know the answer to that question.
I didn't think so.
That hasn't been studied, that hasn't been studied yet.
Okay, all right, anyone else? Questions? No?
There are two members from the public here, and, and it's getting late, and we do have a traffic expert that we can bring back to the next meeting. We'd like to at least hear from the public if possible.
That would be great, yes. Okay, like to open it up to, uh, public comments. Anyone who cares to speak about this application, please, up to the mic.
Sir, thank you for raising right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please?
My name is Mendel Trieger, my last name is T R I E G E R. I currently live on the, uh, 7 Oak Drive, which is directly behind the current proposed building.
And are you the author of the?
My wife.
Okay.
Um, I could just address that right away. I, my wife is a little frustrated because, um, we reached out to the lawyer right after getting the letter regarding, um, seeing what the plans were, just to know what we're getting ourselves into, and we, we haven't, basically, they didn't want to give us any plans, saying that we have to wait until, um, it's publicly available, so my wife is a little frustrated, she just sent out the email. But, um, I have reached out, once I got the plans on Friday, I reached out to the, um, the developers, the owners, um, we've had a phone meeting with them. And they have agreed to address, address most of our issues.
Which were?
Um, mainly, uh, privacy. Um, I'm not against this building at all, I think it's a very aesthetically pleasing, I have no issue with the size, doesn't bother me. My main issue was that in the plans that were given, which has now been changed, was that there was an open terrace, which is, which was essentially like backseats overlooking my backyard, me, my family, um, which was a big concern for us. Um, we requested that. Um, and it seems like they've been trying to comply with that, that the public has no access at all to the northern elevation of the building. Um, I'm just have a couple of questions regarding, um, how do we ensure that the public has no access? I understand you're saying that two-thirds of the building, two-thirds of the roof is what right now we're opening to the tenants of the building, but how do we ensure that nobody gets behind that space?
Take it, but my, my concept would be that the front two-thirds would be available for this outdoor amenity, and I think we'd have to have a parapet that would go across the entire roofline to prohibit anybody, you know, from going to that back portion, which is closer to your.
I'm just unfamiliar, what does a parapet mean?
Just a, let's say, a wall.
A wall roof.
Right. To prohibit anybody from going back there?
Also, um, one of the, um, one of the members, I mentioned solar, that would be really good way to, uh, prevent anybody from reaching that area.
Agreed. Yes, and we'll, we'll relate, relate that to our client and certainly look into, um, you know, being able to put solar panels on that, that northern portion of the, uh, of the roof area.
Yeah, another issue I had, um, regarding, um, um, the attorney mentioned before, um, nine to five, that the place would be open nine to five, how do we? I'm saying there's no curfew on the building, right? These are tenants that can come and go whenever they want, so like, it's going to be locked upstairs, like, how, how is that going to be? It may be automatic lock every night, like a machine that locks the doors, how does that work?
Well, I, I, I think that would, that's probably how it would function, the, the rooftop would certainly, certainly be limited to, to daytime hours at the, at the latest, and I think five o'clock. It certainly applies to the, to the utilization of the rooftop space. The office space, you know, somebody may be working overtime or working some extra hours, uh, but the rooftop space, I think, I think our client would certainly accept that five o'clock would be a, you know, uh, uh, you know, black and white, uh, nobody on a rooftop past five o'clock.
I would like to mention that, um, based on the plans that I've seen, um, from the second floor, um, A, A two, it seems like there's a lot of very small office, um, not cubicles, but is, it's, it's walled in, but it looks like there's going to be a lot of tenants, which is fine with me. But would, basically, that means that we're not really considering here renting this space out to a big business. We're assuming they're going to be entrepreneurs, freelancers, self-employed.
Well, it, it, it could be either, I mean, somebody could, could call our client, say, I want the whole building, and, and he, and he could, you know.
But there is a big chance that that would be the target audience, I mean, that would be the audience that it's going to be targeting because simply, you know, it's a modern feel.
Uh, the discussions I've had with my client, I think we, we anticipate it's going to be multi-tenant.
I have no issue with that, but my issue is, is that usually those people are not traditional nine-to-five workers, meaning they usually work when they associate fit. Which automatically takes away the, that the standard is that most people are not going to be there after five, so there's less of a reason to enforce the, uh, that nobody gets there, um, the roof after five, this not applying in such a situation. Um, one other thing, um, that I would like to address is that we have spoken to the developers on, on Friday, and they've agreed as part of our, a part of, um, um, helping us with the privacy issue is to put, um, a row of bushes on our side of the gate, being the other side of the property, which I haven't seen any of the plans.
Now, he didn't relay that to me yet, but if he's agreed to that, we'd certainly show that on plans that were submitted for what we call resolution appliance review.
Really to excuse me? Are you willing to make an off-site improvement?
Oh, we have agreed to, uh, ensure that we're going to be the ones taken care of, once it's obviously, meaning it's not going to be their responsibility. But, um, one other question, uh, one other mention I would like to, um, address is if there's any way, um, that can be conditioned, um, um, let me get the right words. Basically, that we want the fence and the, uh, bushes be put in before construction begins, just to ensure safety. Um, any debris, dust coming into the property during construction, which is essentially right in my backyard. That can be conditional to any, um, that people are conditionally to any.
I, I would definitely agree to the, uh, to the, to the fencing, the landscaping could be installed as soon as possible when, uh, the site had, you know, has been, you know, adequately cleared and graded to allow landscaping to be planted.
Yeah, so I just regret, I just, um, you know, request from the committee to ensure that all this is, um, I don't, regulate, whatever the word is, to ensure that this actually happens, we have no other way other than the committee to ensure that all this actually.
As long as they agree to it, it'll be in the resolution.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Would you prefer a six-foot fence or an eight-foot fence?
So if there's, um, uh, uh, bushes, which from what I understood from the owner, um, it's going to be, um, like a full screen, which means, like, um, I think I spoke to a landscaper on yesterday, he told me that, um, ideally you want them to be, um, about six to eight feet apart planted. Which would mean a full privacy fence, and I think, um, the, the bushes are called, let me get the name right, it's called the Fugue Green Giant. Which is something that grows really fast, I think approximately two to three feet a year, so that would be sufficient to, uh, but if.
If I remember correctly, I think the township has a six-foot limit on fencing, um, and, and quite frankly, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that it's right for us to grant that type of waiver.
That's fine, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a little quickly, a question. Did I hear that the developer was going to put landscaping on private property or on the back of their own property? All right, so that would not, are you saying that that we would have in our resolution? That the developer is putting landscaping on private property, or is that an appropriate use of the resolution process? I just want to make sure I understand.
The, so.
So the developer's meeting with the individual homeowners to make, uh, individual deals, I guess?
Yes.
To, to get.
So.
Acquiescence?
Yes.
Okay, and we will put that in the resolution?
The resolution would articulate that it's the promise between the two, the question of enforceability comes between the two private folks.
Thanks.
As a statement of fact.
It's both rear properties.
Yes, we, we still hope. So I just want to ensure that's in the resolution, even though it's not on the property, I just want to ensure that.
What the resolu, should the board approve it, because by the way, it, it's a, it is an off-site improvement, but we recognize the neighbor's request. What the resolu, excuse me, what the resolution would, what the resolution would articulate is that in dis, in discussion between the applicant and the owners of lot, um, lot, uh, lot four and lot five, um, the applicant has agreed, and the, and the owners have accepted the placement of landscaping material on their, on their property.
Absolutely.
And that's it?
We're going to submit a revised plan between now and the next time we come back, and we'll show that landscaping, we'll show it to you in advance, and you, it might be on the plan, which will make it easier.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir? Come on over. Sir, do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please?
Shia Cohen, C O H E N, 9 Oak Drive, and your property to the right behind. All right, I'll try screaming. So firstly, the variance that they're requesting for the building to be set forward closer to county line, actually, I think works better for us. It's further away from our property, so even though they mentioned before that it may not be impacted by the other side, but from our perspective, we actually rather it further from our property. Um, that's one thing. Second thing is that I think it's fairly obvious from the design of the building that we're looking to attract a younger crowd over here, which may bring out more partying going on on that rooftop, and, um, that's definitely a concern of both of ours. And we want to just make sure that there's something that's. that there's something that's actually enforcing this beyond just, like, you know, word of mouth and with the, you know, agreement that, hey, it's only nine to five. We want that, there should be a wall there, or as mentioned before, maybe a, a wall in, in, in between the, the front half and the back half of the, the roof. And then the third thing is just the, the, we noticed in the plans that there weren't trees on my side of the, they, they weren't, on, on. So I don't know, which, uh, which means this, A three? It's, yeah, the landscape plan is, there's only bushes on the left side, not the right side.
Is that part of our package?
Yeah. A three you're looking at, correct?
Yeah.
So describe again what A, what you're saying on A three?
So there's only, in, in the landscape plans, you only see trees or bushes, whatever they are, on the left side, not the right side. That's because there are existing trees on the right side. Uh, I want that, in addition to those trees, put more bushes on the other side of the fence, that, you know, similar to what we're getting on his property.
From the current plans, um, which didn't say about any bushes on our side of the gate, it's only showing bushes on, on, on the side of the property owners. It's only showing that they're gonna be planting bushes behind my property, not behind his, because there are existing trees there already, but those trees are, I, I'm not sure what the make of those trees are, what, what, what the, uh, species is, but it's, it's really tall trees, and on the bottom, it doesn't, doesn't give any privacy at all, so. Just, we're just making sure.
So, well, not to belabor the point, so there are tall trees on your property.
On, yeah.
On your side.
We're not showing additional plantings.
That's not my question. My question, not being an arborist, is if you have tall trees that are emitting shade, and you're gonna agree and con, it's kind of, I'm gonna guess this is sort of Mr. Wall's point, about at what point do, does the township and the board, we're gonna get embroiled with enforcing, well, somewhat nebulous agreements between the next-door neighbors and the property owner? Hear, hear me out for a second. What I'm concerned is, is that, that the board agrees, everybody agrees to put these bushes, um, in the shade emanation of these large trees, which is on your property, and those, and those plants die. Who, what bond is there to enforce the replanting on someone else's property, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
Well, there's, it's, 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 it's easy. First of all, anything we plant on their property is gonna be their responsibility to maintain, and they, I'm sure they've agreed to that already. As it relates to plantings on our property, there are plants that survive in shade. We're gonna, we're gonna supplement where, where necessary. We'll work with your board professionals so that we could further buffer this gentleman's property. And then plants on our property, we have to maintain.
I understand. I just wanna make sure the public understands that the, should this ultimately be approved, the bonding process only protect the plantings on this site.
Mr. Chairman, that was basically my point with the attorney was saying. I don't think the planning board, and I would oppose the planning board getting baked into any private deals between the property owner and adjoining homeowners and owning their problem. That's their problem.
Agreed. We don't want to get in the middle of that and, and have it on us.
Because I think there are thirty-six trees or so, unless I counted wrong.
Yeah.
And I, we know how many are being removed out of the thirty-six trees, because you have some large cal, I think you have one thirty-foot, thirty-inch caliber tree. Uh, uh, is there a landscape plan within here? Within, like, a full landscape plan, or just the?
Yeah, A picture.
Just, just the picture?
A picture, just the picture.
Okay, thank you.
We have a landscape plan, sheet, should be sheet seven in your set?
Sheet seven, thank you.
Shows the, um, shows the entire landscape plan and the.
Out of the thirty-six trees, how many are being removed? If it's thirty-six, how many, how many of mature trees are being cut down?
Um, I don't, I don't see the exact count on here. I'll make sure that that's on when we, when we resubmit.
Okay, because, Mr. Chairman, that would help the planning board with understanding what the actual landscaping plan is. If it has to do with cutting down a number of trees, and then you're having additional trees added, and you see what your net trees are, particularly if we're just looking at arborvitae's instead of mature trees, or whatever the variant of the evergreen is. So I think that's worth looking at, and I know our environmental commission rep is not here tonight.
Yeah, and these plans are, are subject to approval by, by your tree specialist, and your ordinance does require for, uh, payment of a fee if, uh, the required onsite trees cannot be planted.
Has the environmental commission reviewed the, uh, the plans yet?
I have not gotten, uh, feedback from the environmental commission yet, but we'll have that when we come.
I don't wanna channel him, but he would definitely have some input perhaps on the environmental side of.
Hopefully, we'll have, they'll come much when we come back.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
And just one last thing regarding the roof, wanna discuss that a little bit more. Um, can we also ensure that if there is, like, any rooftop access to that back area, that there's a wall that's actually not see-through, not glass, that, um, or whatever part is overlooking our properties is actually a full wall? Is that?
Yeah, we, we take no objection to that.
All right, well then.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? No, seeing no one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, Mr. Alfieri?
Thank you for your input tonight. We're gonna request we be placed on the next available agenda, and I heard that the retirement's gonna be deferred so she can hear the balance of the testimony. No, I guess not.
Um, when can you be prepared?
Graham? Um, we, we have to connect with the architect. Graham's gotta make some plan revisions. Uh, Scott's ready to testify when we come back. Where we're looking.
So, Mr. Chairman, it would appear, and also for, uh, respectfully, I guess, Mr. Alfieri's sake, um, a number of his applications will move to February twenty-eighth. It wouldn't necessarily be the worst determination that his office would, at some level, I'll use the term control that agenda, um, to move this application to that date as well, and then depending on how, how his clients, how quickly they move forward, will be, the board and he will be able to determine how best to, to move.
Um, it's, I'm gonna be here anyway, so it's.
That's.
That's, that's fine.
Okay. Um, so I'll just make the announcement. All right, so what are we talking? Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, with regard to, uh, application, uh, block seven, three oh nine, lots twelve and thirteen, Jackson Project LLC, that matter will be carried to the February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two meeting without the requirement of further notice. Applicant is waived time through March thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Okay, uh, may I have a motion to carry this to February twenty-eighth, please? Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you. Have a great holiday, everyone. Happy New Year.
Yeah, I was. So listen, before you guys leave, I, I'd just like to say, you know, this is Denise Bono's last meeting, so, you know, she's retiring. She has been so helpful to this board and has really run a tight ship and, and just really gone above and beyond all these years, and you, you've been so much appreciated by all of us. I'm not sure you know how much you're appreciated, but we really do, we're really gonna miss you. And I'm sure any night, any Monday night that you're not busy, you know, there's always, when there's nothing on TV, by all means, come back and visit, and we'd love to have you. Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor? We're done.